To the December 4th Board of Education meeting for Byram Hills, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to what is one of the greatest meetings that we have all year because we have you here joining us for what is going to be a great celebration. Bear with us because we just have some business to take care of and it will not take long. And the first request I would have of the board is just a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? And are there any comments from the public on any agenda items that are not on this agenda but any items that want to be discussed tonight? Hearing none. Next, we have our consent agenda. And just to give you a quick 30-second tutorial on what a consent agenda is, we have a bunch of matters that the board has to vote on. Sometimes they're contracts for business purposes, sometimes they're special education-related, sometimes they're personnel-related, if there's new teachers coming or substitutes or coaches. And we get all that in advance so that we can review it and then we approve it all at once to the extent that we're comfortable with it. And if not, then things get pulled off to be discussed in greater detail. And this allows us to really spend the most time on the issues that are the most important to talk through, which we have, you know, an agenda full of those after we share some thoughts with all of you on the most important item on the agenda tonight, which is all of you here. So with that as a little bit of a backdrop, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel, item six, special services, item seven, and then business, item eight. So move. Any comments, questions on any of the items? If not, all in favor? All right. With that, we are through what we needed to get through in order to get to item nine, which is our special report.
Our special report and our special visitors tonight, which I had the opportunity to welcome while the board was in session. But tonight, we have visitors for a few reasons. First of all, we have our cum laude recipients, which constitute the top 10% of the Byram Hills senior class. We have our national merit semifinalists and our national merit commended students. And for national merit, what that amounts to is you are one of 16,000 students out of the 1.6 million who took the PSATs, who scored in the top percentage, in the top 1.1% or 3%. And the, I want to explain a little bit about what those are. Now, I know that you all thoroughly enjoyed Dr. App's description of cum laude and its history. And, I mean, she does give a great history and bearing to why this is important to us. So bear with me while I educate the board and your parents a little bit more. This is quite a distinction for Byram Hills. Although cum laude was founded in the early 1900s, this is a group that really, they have maybe 380 or so chapters in the United States, many are private school and not necessarily public school. It is very similar to being in Phi Beta Kappa society when you are in college, which is really a distinction and an honor. They have a motto in Latin, I'll give you a little Latin, you know, just in case you didn't learn enough about how boards operate, maybe we'll give you a little Latin, more useful knowledge for you. In Latin, it is R T D K T M A, which means excellence, justice, and honor. And that is their motto. And I definitely can say, in Byram Hills, to be considered amongst the group of people who follow the motto excellence, justice, and honor. We are very proud of you for that. That takes a lot of courage, it takes a lot of determination. And for our national merit semifinalists, national merit says their purpose is to encourage academic excellence and its pursuit. They call you scholastic champions, right? Which is pretty intense. I would like to come up with my own portmanteau tonight. I know there's only one person in the audience who knows what a portmanteau is. Anybody else in the audience know what that is? A portmanteau? Any guesses?
Did you take your verbal SATs yet?
Well, this was actually a Lewis Carroll creation, and it is the, for lack of a better definition, the smashing together of words to create a new word. So brunch is breakfast and lunch, and brangelina, that's probably not the example I should use, but anyway, it's something like that, and it's called a portmanteau. So while we have a motto from cum laude, excellence, justice, and honor, and while national merit calls you scholastic champions, I am going to create a portmanteau and say that you are students with finacity. And I think that is fidelity and tenacity. And that's what I admire about you, and I'm grateful that you're here tonight to receive this recognition from the board. How do you have fidelity? I think you have faithfulness in what you're doing, rigor, meticulousness. And how do you display that you have tenacity? You developed personal goals and pursued them. And that is hopefully something that's going to take you many places in your life, no matter what it is you're doing in your professional or personal eyes. So congratulations to you. I am proud to be your superintendent and have you here. So congratulations on your finacity. Can anybody remember what the word is that means you smash two words together?
Or management.
Oh, there I am. And that further exemplifies why you are here. I know many groups that would not answer that. So thank you.
Just like an English teacher.
Yes, just like, I was an English teacher.
Yes, you were.
I thought it was a trick question.
Just a few comments on behalf of the board. We really are very proud of the accomplishments collectively in this room. And as it happens, you know, we're now on the precipice of budget season again, so we'll be toiling away in January, and when we get the budget book, this, they can start to go through it and try to remember why we're school board members, we will remember you because you are the inspiration behind, you know, so much of the greatness of this district. And so we thank you for all of your efforts. We want you to remember your journey, we hope you're proud of your journey, because it's one thing to reflect on the accomplishments tonight, which is awesome, but also the journey that it took to get here, and all the hard work and the lessons learned, and hopefully the friends made, and the relationships with teachers, and administration, and all the things that go into, you know, your experience here at Byram Hills. And then lastly, after we have this presentation, we're going to talk about the wellness initiative and get an update on some of the activities in the middle school and the high school. So just trying to bridge that to this, you know, as you hopefully have a very good second half of, you know, of your senior year and have a lot of, you know, relaxation before you get into college, when you ultimately go to college, you know, the rigor starts again and the rat race starts again. And so we want you to keep up with this rigor and amazing work you've done, but at the same time, you know, stay healthy and balanced and well, and that's the key to hopefully success in life, to balance those two things. So we're really glad you're here and we thank you for all your hard work.
Yes, we do. I can't leave this without saying something, because we celebrate a lot of things at Byram Hills, all the time. We celebrate success in academics, we celebrate success in athletics, we celebrate success in drama, we celebrate success in the arts, science, we really do, we have a lot to celebrate. But at the end of the long day, it's really you. It's really the students who have excelled academically that really are the crown jewel to this school district every year. And you make us very, very proud. And you also should remember how your parents got you here. You didn't do this by yourselves, believe it or not. You may think you did, but I guarantee you didn't. And when you get home tonight, it wouldn't kill you to turn around and maybe thank your parents for all the support they've given you over this 13-year career of yours at Byram Hills, which slowly but surely will be wrapping up in a couple of months. We are very, very proud of all of you. And it's, above all, the academic success is what makes Byram Hills great. So congratulations to each of you. And we know that when you go out into the bigger world, you go out to college, that you will represent Byram Hills well, that people will look at you and see not only well-rounded people, but decent, humble, and just people that really have been raised well, have learned well, and really carry on what we like to believe we're all about here at Byram Hills. So I hope you'll do it, and I hope you'll go forth, as the superintendent said, with honor, because hopefully you have that with you now as you should. So for me, who you don't know, a very warm personal congratulations.
And on that note, we're going to take a moment and honor each of you. I will call your name. And we will have them come around, is that what we usually do?
Yeah.
Yes, stand.
Have you come around the room and you can shake hands with Dr. Lamia and anyone else who wants to shake hands. And we'll have a moment to celebrate you.
You have to have a parent on the school board, it's okay to give a hug.
So, thank you, and we'll start with our first. So we have Samantha Eversase, cum laude. And Ellen Amico, cum laude, national merit.
Congratulations.
Matthew Butera, national merit commended. Alan Chang, cum laude, national merit semifinalist. Zachary Cogan, cum laude. Joshua Friedman, national merit semifinalist. Shay Gordon, national merit commended. Raul Gupta, cum laude, national merit commended. Tyler Hart, cum laude. Isabel Alon, cum laude. Megan Wong, national merit commended. Elise Kaner, cum laude, national merit semifinalist.
That's the real daughter.
Renner Quitkin, national merit commended. Renner cannot be with us this evening. Emma Lucino, cum laude, national merit. David McDaniel's, cum laude, national merit semifinalist. David cannot be here this evening. Nicole Meyer, national merit commended. Nicole cannot be with us this evening. Sidney Nipo, cum laude, national merit. Pietro Perez, cum laude. Brent Perlman, cum laude, national merit commended. Lindsay Perlman, cum laude. Griffin Rackhour, cum laude, national merit commended. Renner cannot be with us. Jonah Schwam, cum laude, national merit semifinalist. William Siege, national merit commended. Haley Segal, cum laude. Dylan Starker, cum laude. Riley Sullivan, national merit commended. Renner cannot be with us this evening. Zoe Swiss, national merit commended. Nicole Tiso, cum laude, national merit semifinalist. And Spencer Weinhoff, cum laude, national merit. Also announce that we had two faculty members inducted into cum laude, Ms. Jennifer Layden, our social studies chairperson, and Mr. Christopher Lewick, the Byram Hills math teacher. Let me do a picture of all of you while we have you here.
We overestimated.
We're overestimated.
No, we sit, yeah, we sit.
Good, we're close. Wow, this is nice. This is going to go in my living room.
We're a small community.
We love each other.
Over there.
I think we got it.
And you can see.
Yeah, so we're going to take a quick break, and anybody is more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but otherwise, if you have things to do tonight and need to get home, feel free. And again, congratulations to all.
Thank you.
We're good to go, on to items now.
Oh, wait, where's my arrow?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, so tonight, we are happy to have Kim Lappel and Angelo Ancona from the middle school and Chris Walsh from the high school to talk to us in a curriculum conversation about wellness. As the board is very aware, starting around last year, a little before last year, we started to look at our kids a little bit differently. We knew that we were preparing them for the rigor that was expected of them not only in Byram Hills but beyond. We knew that our students were getting into top-tiered colleges, and we also knew that that could not be the only measure for us for success for our kids. And that in addition to the rigor and the expectations that we had for them, we needed to make sure that our kids were fortified with the right kind of toolbox, so when they went out into the world, they felt like they were well-balanced. Fortunately, Chris Walsh brought some work from Stanford University to our attention, and now that work is being shared at the middle school level as well. And this year, they are moving forward with the initiative in full gear for Wellness K-12. We're calling it Wellness for Life K-12. So Tim, you probably want to get started in the curriculum conversation, this is Tim's expertise.
Well, a lot of people working on developing our expertise over the years as we learn about this. So thanks to the board, thanks for all of you for coming here. And our hope tonight is to see how we are working toward balancing that rigor with wellness. And it is something that we're continuing to grapple with, and you'll hear some of the successes we're seeing, some of the things we're doing to lead to that, as well as some of the challenges that we're facing. So it's meant to be a real and honest conversation with you, and feel free to jump in, this is meant to be a discussion. We do have some slides, but we want it to be less of a presentation and more of a discussion with you. So feel free, when questions come to your mind, to just jump in, and I'm sure we can handle that. And I think ultimately, our goal is to be certain K-12, that we are able to identify what our goals are with wellness, and make sure that we have a common understanding of how we're working toward those goals as a district. And that's what our work has been over the past couple of years and going forward. So I just want to jump in with this question that we've been pondering for the last couple of years, how do we balance a rigorous academic program with the social and emotional wellness of students? And it's something that we believe we can do, and we are seeing that happening in our district. I won't go through all of this, but this was a chart I showed you at our last curriculum conversation when we worked on the goals. This was some of the district initiatives, trying to encapsulate them together. What we're really doing today is focusing on that bottom row with character education, on the social-emotional piece. However, I show the whole slide because I believe that all of these things go hand-in-hand, that these aren't isolated initiatives or efforts, but that they're all intertwined. And you'll hear some of the focus around the way we're teaching students, some of the curricular things, as well as the leadership development, and how that all ties into wellness. And finally, I thought we would start the conversation with this slide from Challenge Success. This is a statement on their website, and let me just read that to you and to the audience. "At Challenge Success, we believe that our society has become too focused on grades, test scores, and performance, leaving little time for kids to develop the necessary skills to become resilient, ethical, and motivated learners. We partner with schools, families, and communities to embrace a broad definition of success and to implement research-based strategies that promote student well-being and engagement with learning. After all, success is measured over the course of a lifetime, not at the end of a semester." So that is something we're unpacking, and we're doing some things so we can find that balance between promoting well-being and engagement. And what I want to start the conversation with, to Kim, Angelo, and Chris, is with that one, the first line in that second paragraph, "We partner with schools, families, and communities," because I think the partnership is important, I don't think teachers can do this alone, I don't think a principal can do this alone, I think all of us as a community have to expand our view of what success is. So I'm wondering how you are partnering with others besides just thinking of it yourself as an initiative or with just faculty?
So when we first started looking at Challenge Success, one of the great things about it was that they actually won't work with schools unless they are comfortable that all stakeholders are involved in anything going forward with any changes or any implementations. So for us at the high school, we took that and we started a steering committee made up of all the different stakeholders. So we have parents who are on it, students, administrators, teachers, guidance counselors, and even our aides. And through that steering committee, we try to work with all of their different hats to make sure that anything that is coming up, we're not overstepping bounds in one way and that we're going far enough in other ways. So this, Challenge Success really promotes that. And we've been working with a coach from Challenge Success who really makes sure that we are addressing all the different stakeholders.
To mention this steering committee, what did you form that?
So we formed the steering committee initially last year, right when we were about to implement the survey. Because we wanted to make sure that we had some structure in place so that when we did receive the results back, we would have people there who could really look and unpack them and give us their perspectives on what the results actually were telling us.
How'd you get members? How did you get the parents and the students and the teachers?
So we had conversations with different faculty members, conversations with parents, and we sort of wanted to pick people who were feeling some of these same things, where people who we had conversations with talked about trying to move away from that singular path of success. And they were open to it. Some of the people I purposely got who weren't really into it and didn't really buy into it, because we need those voices on there as well. So I wanted the critics of this work also. And some of them are on the steering committee as well.
You reached out to the parents, you didn't ask for volunteers?
We, I did. At my principal's coffee, I asked for volunteers, I presented it. And then, even since we've had speakers this year, more parents have come on board. And so our parent, our parent part of it is actually expanding somewhat.
Chris, when there were critics, which inevitably there always, there will be, what were the most common reasons? And now through the course of the work that's been done thus far, though it's not complete, any change in opinion on?
So it's, we're moving an elephant, right? So it's very slight. But the biggest concern was that, why are we messing with a good thing? And why, based on all of our metrics, if we are a very successful school, why would we try to have any impact on that at all? And why would we change something that's working? So that's a reality, and it is, you know, something that we have to make sure that we keep in mind as we go through with this work. The other great thing about Challenge Success, though, is that we know that they have partnered with over 150 schools across the country, very similar socioeconomic status, very similar levels of rigor in those schools, they've surveyed over 150,000 students. So they have a track record of 15 years of working with schools just like ours. So that was something that I felt comfortable with, that their background could help us try to move over those critics slowly but surely. And we have seen some changes so far. We'll talk about the shadow day that we had in the last two weeks, and some of the findings and some of the discussions with teachers that may have not believed in the work, after they spent a day traveling with the students, they said, "Okay, sign me up, I'm ready."
Can I, I just want to ask a question. So they've been doing this for, you said, 15 years. So is there any data that shows in schools that were similar to ours, that started so a long time ago, have their students that have gone on to colleges, are they as well-prepared and able to handle the rigor compared to before they started?
Yeah, so they, so the longitudinal data on it, Challenge Success will bring back in their survey instrument, like we plan to do, to survey our students at different increments. But when you're looking out and looking at their preparedness for college, each of those individual schools don't report back to Challenge Success. But what those schools do report is that when they do see that change, they do see the approach to the way that students are applying to colleges and going on selecting colleges to be a much more healthy experience for them. So by and large, they, the individual schools are reporting that they feel more comfortable with the kids moving on after they go through this process.
How often do they recommend doing a survey? Like every couple of years, few years?
So there are some schools that do it every year, some schools do it once each, for each cohort. So you would do it as a 10th grade class, and we're looking to maybe do it somewhere in between there, once maybe every three years, we think would give us some good amount of time to make any adjustments, and then see how it impacts their results.
Kim, can you talk about the committee you have and what stakeholder groups you're involving in your discussions?
So like the high school, we have a steering committee that also was initiated last year for the purpose of kind of being on the balcony, meaning that we had this survey and this data that was provided to us, and it was extensive. So different groups mined the survey for information, they were kind of in the weeds, and then they would give their feedback up to the steering committee that was in the balcony that had that broad view. And that committee then, by the end of last year, could say, "Here are some themes that we've seen that seem to really speak to our middle school's experiences." And that was screen time, being overscheduled, teacher-student relationships, those were big components that we walked away with. This year, and so that our faculty began their work around these areas. This year, the steering committee, again comprised of students, parents, teachers, administrators, we were looking to figure out what's our next step as a committee. And what we determined was our next step would be to have a focal point that we could use and kind of promote through the school. And after a lot of work...
So after a lot of work and after a lot of wrestling around with the idea, the children that are on the committee wanted to focus on advocacy. So advocating for, you know, for whatever their ideas were. But what they felt was that they were comfortable in an academic setting. What they're not comfortable doing is being an advocate in a social setting with their friends. So the committee saw a lot of transfer between the academic world and the social world. So I think we're moving towards moving some of that work that we do in the classroom and transferring that over to their social world.
So the steering committee has a focal point, it's self-advocacy. So the steering committee has a focal point, it's self-advocacy, because we feel like it's a tool that all of our students are unique. What stresses them out and what makes them anxious is really unique to them. So if we teach them to be self-reflective and then advocate for themselves, they can be advocating for what their needs are. So we came up with one focal, one statement. We're going to then, as a committee, go and speak to our constituents and figure out ways that we can bring them into the conversation. How can we share this idea with parents? There's the, yes, how can we share? So the idea would be students will be able to identify problems as well as a possible solution, and then communicate with the necessary person or persons appropriately and respectfully. So that's the focus of the committee this year. And now our charge is, how do we bring that to life? How do we make that really explicit in classrooms that when a student walks away from, when we're teaching this all the time as teachers, that will sit with the student and then in that social setting...
Right, in that social setting, how do you take those skills from, you know, the social studies classroom, the science classroom, into your friend circle at your lunch table? You know, where you can hear each other's opinions and where you can agree to disagree, but then still be friends?
And of course, that's the most difficult for kids, right?
Is that was a voice circles before? Is that one of the parent...
No, that one, so, no, but we've claimed some, but that's similar to what we have experienced with the voice circles, which is another, when Tim asked who we partner with, we're also partnering with the most important constituents, it's our students. And that's through the voice circles that we've developed so that we can hear their voices and we can work with either the teachers to students or students to students developing relationships. And then that's the voice circles. And we can go through that a little later. But then the last, because we're sticking in the partnership component, it's also the teachers. The teachers now, each team, because middle schools are built on teams, they are, and we've spoken about this, you shared it with the board last time, that they have wellness goals. Each team has wellness goals. So the teachers are another group that we're partnering with to really focus on how can we support our students' wellness by a goal for the year that they can really look at, examine, bring to life, and then reexamine through those student voice circles.
And the goals that they chose are reflected in what our wellness committee decided our teams were going to be. So each team then went back to those themes and picked a theme and developed a goal.
So I was at the coffee with everybody, did the voice circles, and our little group, we said, we said to the, it happened to be two girls, we said to them, you know, "How, tell us the truth, are you really being honest this? Because, you know, are you being honest in front of your peers and there's an adult there and you're still being honest?" And they said they were. And the openness about talking about things that they were, one of the themes we were talking about in that group is anxiety and things like that. And they were so open to us, and we were parents, and they were really open in front of us. I was shocked at how open, I don't think my own kids are that open.
Yeah. I attended also with Lori, and the level of maturity of these children to facilitate these groups and get up in front of all the adults and speak, and it was just remarkable. And they really, our group too, they opened up, they expressed, your son was there. He did a great job. He just, he really did. He opened up. He asked for what we went through. It was a very nice experience for us, where we went through a middle school and they really wanted to hear our experiences and how it differed from the Stone Age to...
Were you on...
And we had a parent crying, like, yeah, it was just very remarkable, very moving. Yeah. No, we didn't make her cry, she was just very open and honest. It was a very, very safe environment, it really was.
But that's the partnership with students, so they've bought in. And there's a group of ambassadors that, they're trained. So the first thing that they'll tell you is, voice circles, it's not sitting in a circle, sharing an idea and talking circular. Like, that's not, there's a whole structure, there's four parts to it. And if you do it the right way, it allows everyone to gain comfortability and trust so that you can have honest conversations and share your ideas.
And, you know, just tomorrow, we do it with our faculty and the students, at our faculty meeting. So our students are going to lead those voice circles for our faculty.
By choice, they asked to do it.
And they design the whole...
How you could see the leadership roles, like, within the kids, that some of them took on. And I don't know if that was planned or if they just naturally took on a more leadership role, but it was very funny to watch.
It's organic. You allow them to be who they're comfortable being and grow from there.
It was great.
It was very impressive, it really was.
Yeah, it was terrific.
Impressive kids.
Yep.
In the high school, are you at the point yet where you have a bunch of, like, action plans to change certain aspects of whatever it is? Or are you still in the investigatory mode where the committees are trying to come to those conclusions?
Yeah, so we are in the mode of trying to start to implement some different things. Challenge Success is really, they're really big on not providing the answers. And I think that's been a frustration with maybe some of the faculty. They just say, "Tell us how to change it. Tell us how we can make kids less anxious. Tell us how we can eliminate stress." And Challenge Success knows that each school is so unique and that there is no one-size-fits-all solution. So if we're looking at how we can balance our kids, we need to make sure that we understand everything about what we're doing. So we've already implemented some of the things. We're undertaking a survey of the master schedule. We've been looking at partnering with University of Michigan to see how they can work with our teachers on problem and project-based learning and different types of assessment.
Chris, let's slow down just a moment, because you're hitting on a couple of big things. You said the survey about the master schedule.
Yes.
Why don't you explain that a little bit in detail?
All right.
Because people are probably wondering what that means at the high school.
So one of the things that they do, Challenge Success helps us look at it through a number of different lenses. And they have something that they call the space framework. And space is an acronym. So the S stands for students' schedule and use of time. P would be project and problem-based learning. A would be alternative and authentic assessments. The C is the climate of care. And the E is the education for the whole community. So when we're doing anything, we want to make sure that we're doing it within that framework. And all of those different five areas need to be addressed in order for us to make changes that are going to be lasting. So in terms of, when I left the cat out of the bag about the master schedule, that would be under students' schedule and use of time. So Challenge Success looks at schools where they feel students have appropriate balance, and they notice certain themes that come up with the template of space. So students' schedule and use of time is one thing that we're looking at a little bit deeper this year.
So your survey might include questions such as...
Right, from all stakeholders groups. And this is a very early stage. So what does each stakeholder group think is important and appropriate for a master schedule? So somebody who really feels like they didn't have the opportunities because of the way the schedule's built to get deeper into music might say, "I want electives to be more readily available in the schedule." Some students might say, "I have no time after school and I want some time during the day." Another kid might say, "I want to have time to relax and eat my panini." So there are any number of things that we're going to look at when we do finally send the survey out right now. What we're in the process of doing at this point is taking those things and trying to categorize them so that the survey can be more meaningful.
And then if you were to do the survey, you would get results and then what would be like a process you might engage in? I don't know if you've thought that part ahead yet.
Yeah, so we've also worked with a scheduling guru, Mike Reddick, who is very well-known in the area. And what he does is he knows, sort of, based on the results of these surveys, what sorts of schedules might be the best for different schools. So we would look at, we have an understanding of what district schools do in the area, and we know what we need in ours, so we would try to find a balance if it was to change. Now, we may go through this and realize that what we have is the best for us right now, but we don't know until we get there.
Chris, I love that approach, and I think it's so healthy that it's not that we have to change everything, it's that we have to look and make sure that what we have is the best thing we could have, or it might need to be altered.
Right, and much the same way that we're looking at start times. So we're doing that because, you know, some of the data suggests that that might be something that would benefit students. So we're trying to make sure that we're getting as much information as possible before we go ahead and try to start that.
I don't know if we have an answer for this, but how long do people usually stay with Project Success? With this project?
So it's been going on, we were able to go to the fall conference. We took a stakeholder group out to Stanford for the fall conference, and one of the schools had been returning there every year for the 15 years. So I think it's really up to each individual school. Some people do it as a means of sort of focusing on their mission. Some schools do it because they really see a need. So every school goes into it with a different idea. I don't think they give an average of how long people are with them.
As long as we're learning, we'll continue to use them as partners. Can you talk a little about a thing or two that you learned when you were out there? How was that experience?
Yeah, so the experience was really great, and it happened that Mark Brackett happened to be the keynote speaker. So Mark from the Center for Emotional Intelligence with Yale, a lot of his work really aligns with the climate of care that this framework uses. So in his discussion, schools that do have that climate of care in place are much more likely to have well-balanced students. So it was great to hear him speak. We also heard from Denise Pope, who's the founder, and she'll be coming to speak to our students and community on February 4th. Just some of the things that we, what I really liked about it, we had two students who were out there with us, and when they had the opportunity to meet with other students from other schools from across the country, some of the things that they were, they came back with questions about like, "Huh, I wonder if we could do this?" Or, "Oh, let me tell you what they do in California," or "This school in Chicago did this." And it's really great just to hear them start to think about it because for so long, they've just done what we've, you know, what we've sort of built them up to do. And for them to start thinking of the outside-of-the-box solutions was really neat to see.
Yeah, that's got to be a big benefit of this, which is the exposure to that network of schools and the ideas that they've tried and haven't worked in, and they've tried and worked. I mean, every environment is different, but you can learn a ton from talking to some of these schools that have been at this for a while.
And getting kids to invest in the space, right?
Yeah, and we have, I think, three students who are going into Bobcat TV tomorrow, who are going to be doing a public service announcement that's going to be going out to the students, where they're doing an "I wish" wall. So they're going to be asking their classmates what they would wish their teachers knew, their parents knew, their friends knew, and administrators knew. And the hope is that that will just give us a little bit more background and a little bit more juice on moving forward.
And one more example, you started to talk about was the partnership with the University of Michigan and project-based learning, problem-based learning. Can you speak to what that work is?
Yeah, so we're very lucky to have that partnership. We have had a partnership with the University of Michigan Depression Center for six years now. And last year, we opened up a partnership with the School of Education. So we wanted to make sure that what we were doing with the Depression Center, maybe we could do things so that it wouldn't get to the point where students were feeling overwhelmed and were feeling stress and anxiety leading to possible school avoidance. So what we saw is, we wanted to identify ways that we could implement project and problem-based learning and authentic and alternative assessments in order to alleviate that. So what that means is, in the classroom, is it all teacher-directed, give the lesson, have the kids go home and study, and assess whether they memorized it? We want it to be more organic. We want it to be much more real-world and much more lifelike. So we have a number of our math teachers, starting last year, our pre-calculus teachers, went down and they were able to go to a school in the Bahamas to actually explore place-based learning. So Mr. Lewick, who was inducted into Cum Laude, he came back and he was using Sexton in the classroom. Mr. LaRue, who went down there, had the kids out on the football field, doing measurements of different angles on the football field. So really exploring ways that kids can learn outside of the normal ways that they've been doing it. We've been doing that, and we're going to try to implement that into other areas as well.
I'm very interested in sort of coming, we'll circle back to what Angela was saying about, and I think we have a very bright student body who can, bright enough to be manipulative, and they know the key words, they know what we want them to say. How do we get them to translate that into their real social environments so that there is the social wellness piece in the cafeteria and after-school activities or on the playground? How do we get them from coming from a space where they're saying, you know, the catchphrases that they know we want to hear about being kind to each other and being good social citizens and make that really happen when they're with their peers? So that we really do have, you know, not just academic wellness, but the social wellness.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think one that schools have been looking into for years. I think what, you know, we'll start to see a lot of qualitative data and a lot of sort of instances where students are more balanced. I think once you see that balance, you start to see them, you know, do the things that you want to see them do. I think a lot of times what we see are that the outcomes are, they're a result of this sort of pressure that they're under. And I don't normally think that kids are mean, you know, or unkind. I think it's sort of a product of sort of outside stresses on their everyday. That's my take on it.
For the middle school, so I take a break, talk and get some time. They need to feel invested in their community. And I think the more that they feel invested and that they have a role in it, that leads to, we can promote them some real positive behaviors. But it would be unrealistic to think that kids are go-to at times, make mistakes, be unkind to one another. And that's where, there's an opportunity, I think, on all our parts we realize, to allow them to learn from it. And if we're promoting language and a culture that allows them to feel part of it, then they'll listen more, they're more engaged in understanding their role. I just think there's a momentum builder in terms of conversations that you're having, the expectations that you're giving, and the inclusion of students in all of that work so that they don't feel like they're on the outside looking in, that they do feel like they're a part of all of it, and that they have a stake in it. It's part of the emotional wellness, hard conversations, right?
And it fosters more trust between us and them. You know, if they feel like they're being listened to and we're actually at some of their, of some of their needs, then, you know, they'll come to us when we have issues and it'll be open and transparent.
Very curious, if this is going to develop, this is the moveable the next year, two, three. The sustaining power of this, the growth power, interesting to see.
Yeah, I've really been very grateful that we are partnering with all these wonderful institutions and utilizing work and, you know...
There's great research available, and so we're trying to take advantage of that and work with others who have some experience working in schools like ours and dealing with these issues. Kim, this could be a good place to then talk about sort of that developmental approach at the middle school and the framework that yours sort of are the lens through which you're doing this. I can get to that slide too if you want.
Are you going to?
Thank you. And this grew out of some research from the Wallace Foundation and out of the University of Chicago. This is sort of a developmental approach. This is a complicated slide, but Kim will talk you through it a little bit and focus on one aspect of it. But it's a developmental approach to social-emotional learning, meaning that every age group has a particular area of focus. You spiral through a lot of these aspects of it, but at different grade levels, you need to pay attention to different things. And so, Kim, do you want to...
So that captures really ultimately the first slide. This was introduced to us from Tim. This was what he brought to us with the University of Chicago. And it brings us a little bit more clarity in terms of what we should be thinking of supporting our students in the middle school. So our students in the middle school are the bottom right of the forest, where it goes cat and cat wise. And then we broke it down a little bit for the middle school. So if we were talking about the middle school...
I'm sorry, I can stay on that slide if you want.
No, that's, so we're going to be focusing all along, where all schools are going to be supporting the agency, the integrated identity and competency. We all have a lot of stake in that, and Angela's going to speak about that. But then, and the inside circle is where there's the foundational components of where we should be focusing in the middle school, it's the mindset. So, Tim, if you could take us to the next slide, Kim.
So the key factors that we continue to work on in the middle school is agency, and that's basically a kid, a student's ability to make choices about their pets. So how do we continue doing that in the middle school? When they pick their music, when they pick their word language?
When they pick their music, when they pick their word language, doing capstone.
When they pick their friends.
When they pick their friends in a, in a social setting, you know.
It goes social as well.
And then developing competency, which is the ability to change and adapt to different situations, which all brings together this, this integrated identity, where a kid will eventually, okay, or an adult, know their strengths and their needs and work within their strengths.
So Angela, I like.
So we were like, okay.
What does that look like? So I said, as an adult, especially at the beginning of my career at Byron Hills, if you ask me the most painful experience, it would be speaking from the board. And that was, so if I thought about my ability to be flexible and honor the different components of me, I realized that that probably was the most painful thing that you asked me to do whenever, oh, it was so hard.
Very scary.
It was, no.
At the beginning of her career.
Yes, so, and now I take some wrapping up, but so, but the truth is, that was because of, like, part of who I was. But then I would always tap into, well, if I'm uncomfortable with some components, then I have to go into comfortable being genuine and being honest in my conversations. So that would help me get through the work when I'd have to stand in front of the board. So that would be, as an adult, how am I able to be flexible and honor? I get very nervous in certain situations, but what are the components that would help me overcome some of those areas that would be more difficult to challenge in the first students?
And still be successful.
Right.
Right, so it's basically building on your strengths and, you know, identifying what your, what your needs will eventually become and working on, upon your needs as you go along.
And that would be, we're all, like, no matter what K-12, we're all working on that. It just, as they get older, it becomes more specific and more pronounced in the key factors. Then the next slide, sorry, Tim, I'm not ready to talk about it tonight. So then, if you look specifically on the foundational components for young adult success, it would be in the middle school mindset. And that would be how one self looks at their interactions with the world, which that is all middle school. That is what we do, if you think about it. How do you process all those experiences of your interactions with your friends, your interactions with the principal, with the teacher, with the parent? And so that's why when you think about the work, the student voice circles, the emotional wellness goals of the team, even the work of the steering committee, it speaks to these areas that we think are quite pronounced and developmentally appropriate in the middle school years.
And like, this work will touch every student in the school?
Well, you know, the voice circles, I'd say some more than others, but yes, it, so when we first introduced the voice circles, everyone did it. Faculty, all staff. I mean, we're not just talking teachers, it was anyone in that building. We asked to be part of it with our students at different times, and every student went through it. It was a little bit different than what the voice circles actually were. They were in voice circles and then did a large group activity. It was to build empathy. That was an experience of building empathy for others and also understanding yourself in the community and how you fit into that community and how the community links and relates to you. Now we become a little bit more focused, and we have voice circles for many different reasons. We have trained our ambassadors, and we're using voice circles that will touch either students, letting them participate, or students leading them. And a few examples, so, whether it's students, students participating or students leading them. So over the past couple of weeks, we had during our exploratory time, seventh and eighth graders that were just discussing ways that they could connect better to the school community or ways that they felt disconnected from the school community. And that came out of the big voice circle experience, where one of the, so the people who facilitated this, they kept track of one component of that workshop or that experience with the kids, and they came back and they told us, some kids don't feel as connected as you want, or they, they feel like they're singular and they're on their own for many, many reasons. It could be that we're competitive, it could be that we're, it doesn't matter, that's how they're feeling. So that's why one of the questions we did, one of the first ones we did was, how do you feel connected at HCC? When is it that you don't feel as connected? And then what are some things that we could do differently? And amazingly.
Amazingly, the teacher that was listening, she was just in the room just listening to the kids having.
She was the student advisor, right?
So the kids, the seventh grade kids were talking about their monologues and how anxious they were about their monologues. And she quickly, the next day, heard that feedback, and she put in a panel of eighth graders to speak to all of her classes, just to lessen the anxiety. And here are your peers, they did it, they went through it, you know, calm down.
Ask them questions.
It can be done, ask them questions.
I don't know what happens in seventh, eighth, and ninth.
So they've been right now.
Wait for it the next day, just to address their concerns and their anxiety.
And then that's also what we hear, that we wanna have more connection between the grades. So there were your role models, some eighth graders who said, oh, that costume, that, yes, you do, we all wear it all day, so don't feel bad. And you can see, because some kids, seventh graders, my God, I have to wear it all day? That is so embarrassing, but to hear the eighth grader say, we wore it all day? And it's what you do. And where do you get it? Well, you heard all the descriptions on where you can get one of these costumes. And you could borrow from someone, find the other George Washington in another class and share your costumes like this. So, yeah, it's, it's a voice circles.
It's starting to trend.
That theme of connectedness, I mean, if you look back at all the, so many of the issues that have happened in this country around disconnected youth, dropout violence, it's so much of roots back to that lack of connectivity to their environment. So it's great to try to chip away at that.
And then what happens is there's, sometimes you just talk, but for the most part, there's some general notes being taken. And when we mine through it just to see, there's really good feedback about how kids were feeling, and something might make you uncomfortable to know that maybe they're free, that they might be identified for a different test that they're taking. But to know that gives us an opportunity to be proactive about, A, we'll hear in you, and B, we will make adjustments if it's appropriate.
It's amazing, these kids are three years removed from being in fourth grade.
Yeah, they are.
Where their gross motor skills have barely kicked in, and their vocabulary, their ability to express themselves is moderate. And here they're having truly young adult conversations and taking leadership roles. This is terrific.
They're laying the groundwork for this stuff in Wampus and even in Common Health.
That's great.
I mean, Wampus has those, those morning meetings now where the kids are starting to express themselves, and they're laying a great, a great map.
Something you recently did with community was amazing. All the kids came home with the same Bobcat t-shirt. It was so sad, and I watched them all wear, I mean, they're all wearing it with pride, so. What a great idea to get it in one t-shirt for the whole class, so that everyone feels like they're part of a team.
Kim, I wanna point out something that I find striking in that example you just gave us, when seventh grade students were expressing anxiety about the monologue, it wasn't the teacher's reaction to say, I can't stress kids out, so I'm not gonna do the monologue. The reaction was, how do we make it better for kids? How do we give them perspective? That was the answer. And I think that speaks to our balancing social-emotional wellness with rigor. We're not taking away rigor, we're not getting rid of it. We're trying to lift up the wellness component to the level of the rigor.
That speaks to what Angela was saying. If we have a good system, we wanna make sure we're doing it the best we can.
Right.
It's also a good argument against the argument that we're not, now the rigor's gonna decline and kids are gonna be able to be free-form and do whatever they want, and there'll be no, you know, academic focus.
Exactly.
I think that's a great point.
That's a good point.
And Ira would say, part of this is, you know, the dunce cap didn't work.
I'm so scared of the call off my scholars, so you'll have to forgive me.
And you can remove all stress, because obviously they're gonna have stress, and they're gonna have to know how to deal with stress. It's everything.
It has to be a safe, like, safe discomfort or a stress that you can manage.
Right. Stress as a motivator is fine, but stress to get sick is, it seems to be what that eighth-grade teacher seemed to take away.
Like, they're gonna have exams in college, they're gonna be tested and assessed in their careers. That's not going wet. I think we have to arm them to gradually learn to deal with it.
And advocate, we also heard that they, word language didn't have, in the testing schedule, wasn't on some of the teams' testing schedules. So that was brought up and to the teachers, and they'll see that the eighth-grade teams have now, they fixed it, so that now they can see all of that together, and it's all in its complexities, so they can make adjustments.
Fostering self-advocacy and communication.
Sure.
And coping skills. I mean, that's the, the idea to Kobe, all have stressors, and the idea is to find those tools to develop it, and I think this is a great way of organically having them develop those coping skills.
Yeah.
Without this, I think we have a culture of kids who could have just spent their time resenting teachers, right? We don't want them having their energy expended in that way. We don't want you resenting teachers or your parent, because nobody's listening to you. We want you to channel that energy to do something else that's more productive.
Building up their toolkit to deal with stressful situations and high academic pressures.
Just thinking about the parade of kids that we've had come through our board meetings over the years, and how impressive they are, how well-spoken they are, and how comfortably they speak in front of adults. And this is, you know, these are situations that prepare them for that.
That's right.
And I like, again, how the teacher was proactive in bringing in the eighth graders to, to, you know, alleviate the nerves of the seventh graders. That also empowers our eighth graders.
You're right.
And it just reminds me of the mentor program. I hear so many people saying how wonderful that is in the high school and how it really helps the ninth graders acclimate. So this is like a little precursor to that.
Making those connections, as Scott mentioned. I'll bring closure to this in a moment, but I wanna circle back to Chris, because what we were hearing with the middle school is getting feedback from students, hearing from students, honoring their experience and then responding accordingly. Chris mentioned earlier the shadowing project that he did. So this is an ultimate way of hearing the kids' experience. So Chris, can you talk about your brilliant idea to have teachers shadow students?
Yeah, so, this was, it is exhausting to be a kid. I would not wanna go back and do that again, thank you. So we set up a, we wanted to make sure that we were actually seeing through the kids' lens. So we set up, put out volunteer requests for teachers. We had ten teachers volunteer to shadow students for one full day. And that would mean meeting them in the morning as they got off the bus or dropped off, and then going through the end of the day, and then going home and trying to do the homework that was assigned to them for that day. So we tried to, yeah, so.
Who wants to do that on the board?
Yeah.
Well, even soccer practice and music lessons and.
Yeah, so we tried to make sure that we got every grade level, and we tried to get as many academic profiles as possible. It was such a success, we're gonna open it up each quarter, because it was so funny, we had teachers who would come in and say, how do I do that? And they would see their colleagues coming into their classes, and they really just started to think like, wow, well, I wonder if I really have a sense of what's going on in the classes. So I had a chance to do it with a sophomore female last Tuesday, and it just so happened that she was enrolled in 7:00 AM Health. Oh, yeah, just my luck. So that day in health, we were doing the impact test, and I got to do that, but it was, it was exhausting. Big takeaway for me is that we have really great teachers, we have really engaging lessons. The kids do not have nearly enough time to sort of just catch a breath during the day. I felt bad that this one student was really not even socializing, able to socialize because of just the passing time and the amount of time that they had during lunch. The homework, that's another focus that we have. We wanna make sure that it's purposeful and meaningful to the student. And really, this was just such a great experience, so eye-opening for me and for the teachers who went through it. I really, we had kids all day long saying, you should be shadowing me. You know what I've gone through every day? You gotta shadow me. So we have volunteers for students, and what we're trying to do is to, to get that full range and that full spectrum. Because we did see some students, some of the teachers shadowed, where it really wasn't, it didn't seem overwhelming at all. And so some of them, we had one teacher who came out and was just like, oh, my God, I'm gonna be up till 2:00 AM. And when they tried to do the homework, they came in the next day and said, I was up till 2:00 AM. So some of our kids are doing that, and just like you had alluded to, stress is good, but that stress that continues on an ongoing basis causes breakdowns, and we don't want that to happen.
I think, just to piggyback a little bit on what you said, Tim, I, my takeaway from
this is, as long as the underlying academic rigor of Byron Hills is maintained, I think this, this is excellent. I mean, if you said, we're doing all these things, and as a consequence, we can't have that, that would be an issue. You know, but just the thought of some of these teachers shadowing these high school students, knowing the incredible schedules these kids run and their day-to-day activities, I mean, those teachers, some of them are in their thirties and forties, they're exhausted. I'd be in a hospital.
Was that a challenge success idea?
Yeah, we had picked that up from Stanford when we were out at the conference. A number of schools had done that. And they just said that that was one of the most valuable things to do.
Really is fantastic.
This is incredible data you have from these teachers shadowing. What's your next step with that?
So what we're gonna try to do is present it back to the, to the whole community. So the, the learning from that needs to go out to the students, it needs to go out to the parents, needs to go back to the teachers. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna, after the next round, we're gonna really try to focus in on key themes that keep coming up. And we see some of them emerging now. I don't wanna sort of taint the, taint the experiment by putting them out there, but there are some things that are coming out. And whether, you know, it didn't matter, the profile, those things are coming up time and time again.
How, how's the community gonna hear about this? Is it through a newsletter, is it through a blast from the air?
So really, a great question. We have parents on our steering committee who are doing a newsletter every month, and they just sent out, they just completed the first newsletter, and that is December 1 focus, is going out, and it's also gonna be blasted out as well.
Does that do the whole district or just high school?
That's high school focus, but anything that may overlap, I'd be happy to, you know, to share it with, with Kim. And we did that with the promotional video. She sent that out through, through the middle school as well and blasted that out. And we'll try to do that to see if there is a district component to what we're doing to try to get that out as much as possible.
And I think, Tim, can even, over time, look at the focus and report back to the board.
Sure.
If there are any changes or anything that's being presented to the parents.
I'll make a pitch for the February 4th presentation by Denise Pope to the community at 7:00 PM at the, in the high school. She will be discussing some of the recent research they've done on college selectivity and rankings, and to how that could have a positive impact on students who are applying to colleges.
February 4th?
February 4th.
Chris, can you?
Is that BHEF sponsored?
Yes. No, they're not. BHEF is not sponsoring. They're sponsoring everything else.
At the high schools.
Like 7:00?
7:00 PM.
No, but now that you mention the BHEF, we must thank them for.
Yes.
For this wonderful challenge.
Yes, absolutely. None of this work would have been possible without their part.
Chris, can you talk a little bit about the work that Denise is gonna do with the sophomores and juniors?
Yeah, so they have been looking at different things that they, they looked through all, all successful schools, and they try to get a sense of what are the real root causes of a lot of the issues in, in these successful schools. One of the things that we keep coming back to, and all these other schools did as well, was that all this work is great, however, none of it can change, and we can't change anything if it's gonna have any negative impact on college acceptances and, and, and the way that we go about that process. So they went and they studied a number of different meta-studies and going back over the last twenty years about the rankings that, that we see all over the place and about the selectivity of the schools. And her discussion with our students and with the, with the, with the families will be what those findings are. So is there any real reason that the rankings are the way that they are? What goes into the rankings? What is it that a selectivity of a school actually does for somebody who goes there? Is there a difference in the experience of somebody who goes to a much more selective school than a slightly less selective school? So those are the things that she's gonna be speaking about there.
Their experience in the school or after?
One year after, in the school, then one year, five years, ten years, and even at retirement, the findings that they, they see.
So is that probably targeted to junior?
It's gonna be sophomores and juniors students, but we feel it's appropriate for everybody in the district, because one of the themes that we, the, the number-one theme or root cause of a lot of the sort of stress in our community is that, is that path to the transcript in those college acceptances. And we believe that that starts much younger than sophomore year. So we'll invite everybody from the community.
Lori, I wanna thank you for bringing up the BHEF as the group that really, they have really been supporting this entire movement for us. And today, I did put out a video for the BHEF with the principals, talking about our Wellness for Life Initiative, K-12, so I encourage people to see that also, which really encapsulates a lot of this work. This is great, and I think this is our district. work. This is great, and I think this is our district, our board supporting, our administrators who are taking a very big leap. We, many of us are of a generation, when we were little, that we were told children are seen and not heard. And I think this is a far cry from that. And you, you know, it started with a change in parenting over generations, but now it's evolved into the schools that need to start looking at kids differently. So thank you for doing that. It's brave.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your work.
This is great, really. This is so very, very interesting to me. It really is.
We look forward to continuing to hear about it.
I hope, hope Kim keeps up the good work on this, really.
Thank you for being here.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm going to understand that a little better. So appreciate your time.
Kim, this was your best presentation to the board ever.
Thank you.
It is scary to public speak.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Good night. Appreciate it.
Tim, that was great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks to them and their hard work.
It is terrific.
It really empowers our kids.
It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing.
It's great to see some of the results presented. Now we're getting follow-up on implementation and digesting that information. So great progress to the extent that I feel informed on progress that's been made.
There's a thoughtful system behind all this. There really is. It's very organized. And, yeah. And I think, I mean, Chris and Kim, who are bringing structure to it, because there's so many different directions you can go. It's not prescriptive. You have to adapt and respond to your environment. You're really doing that. It's, it's hard work. But I think they each have a framework and a lens, and they're approaching it pretty systematically.
I love that story about the eighth grade teacher, the seventh grade teacher bringing the eighth graders. I mean, what better way to empower these kids?
Exactly.
And I have to stress that, you know, they're, over my career, and Tim, you'll vouch for this, and how many books we've read, and it's the something du jour, you know, whatever we're reading about at that given moment. And when you're making a big move in schools, you really need the support of a university that has backed this with studies and with practice. I mean, this is, this is not a fledgling attempt at doing something. And I'm very happy that in Byron Hills, we recognize that, that we need the support of these professionals to do this work, despite the fact that we've done our own research. And, you know, that doesn't make you an authority on this. And you need to be invested in it all the time to have those results.
Denise Pope is doing it. Been doing this for decades now. And so we can keep up with that. So it's really great to tap into. That's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, all of you.
Thanks, all of you. Thank you, Tim.
Is there support? Onto policies.
It was such a fun night until we got to 11:01.
I'll make this fun. There's a smoking policy.
Oh, yay!
He's going to go up and demonstrate for us.
No using smoking devices. So...
At all.
These are pretty straightforward. This is a second read. So if I can just run through each quickly and tell you why it's here. The smoking one was an update in public health law, so we revised that one. The notice of school meeting, or notice of meetings for the board was updated to reflect the open meeting law as well. There's the counseling and guidance program, which was regulatory changes, pretty major, so that was a big change. And then the charging school meals was a revision, an update in New York State law, which prompted yet another revision of this one. I think it's the third in two years. So that's second read. You had a chance to look at it before?
Yep. Motion to adopt each policy as a second read.
So Kim?
Any comments, questions before we...? No? Okay. All in favor? Excellent. Thank you. Thanks to the policy committee. All right. Onto our one new business item, which is the board committee duties and responsibilities.
Yeah.
So in the packet, there were two, right? There were...
Kelly will speak.
Oh, right. There was, there was a description of the audit committee and the financial advisory committee. And this comes out of the work that was done at our offsite where we started thinking about these issues. And then we had a meeting of the new finance advisory committee to go through these in a little bit more detail. So Kelly, feel free to take it away.
Yep. So we had the meeting last Thursday, the first meeting of the financial advisory committee. And we were able to review both your developments from the retreat in mid-November. In terms of the duties and responsibilities for the audit committee, we were able to consolidate three of the actual tasks into one. We cut it down from 10 to 12. Keeping in mind, the whole board is compromised, or comprises the audit committee. So this is what the audit committee is charged with. I'll just quickly go through them. Recommendation of appointment of the external and internal auditor and claims auditor. Meeting the external auditor, discussing any risk assessments of the district's financial operations and interpreting the annual report and accompanying management letter. Making recommendations to accept the annual audit report. Review any corrective action plan developed and make sure it's, the oversight is implemented.
Implementated, excuse me.
Review the findings and recommendations of the internal auditor. Monitor the implementations of the recommendations. Review the annual reports of the claims auditor. Meet with the claims auditor and review the controls. Share the recommendations with superintendent. The business official will evaluate the internal audit scope. So all those tasks, we talked about, had a nice discussion about that. We discussed having a meeting three times per year to meet with each of the auditors and have a discussion with them. Any questions in terms of the audit committee?
I don't think this moment should pass without at least an acknowledgement that this is Kelly's first presentation reporting to the board.
Was that right?
Yay!
He wasn't even nervous.
I've talked to the board once or twice.
We wish you a long and happy stay with us at Byron Hills. We welcome you to our table, and we look forward to your contribution helping us move forward. So welcome and good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome. I didn't know. It's funny. It didn't even dawn on me because we had our committee meeting. So it felt like this was not the first, but you're absolutely right, isn't it?
Thank you. I'm honored to be here.
Happy to have you.
So if there's any questions on the audit committee, we can skip, go to the financial, our finance advisory committee. Again, we're very efficient. We were able to reduce one of the responsibilities and tasks. So let me read those quickly. Establish your budget calendar. Prepare budget guidelines. Review any modifications. The procedure of developing the budget and written materials. Collaborate with the superintendent. Assist the superintendent for business on a financial strategy, including but not limited to development of a long-range forecast, review of assets and debts, development of the administrative proposal, proposed budget, and recommend to the board that the budget meets the budget guidelines.
I heard we recommended that he add in at least two or three additional detailed presentations just for you.
Yeah, we reviewed...
On the tax...
The equalization formula.
True value tax rate.
True tax rate.
Equalization formula, a long way to warming my heart. Thank you.
Yep. I can explain that. And then we set a, kind of a tentative schedule for three meetings. The first one being in October, obviously, next year it will actually be in October. A pretty stacked meeting, the first one, developing the calendar, the guidelines, reviewing the facilities, if there's any potential projects or renovations that are required. Getting into tax certs and pilots, understanding those, understanding how they affect your, your, your budget on a year-to-year basis, and really knowing how those may change on a year-to-year basis. And also, any recommend, recommendations for the proposed budget, anything you really want us to focus on in terms of budgeting going forward. And then this December meeting coming very soon, talk about the, the first budget hearing presentation in January, mid-January. Talk about the long-range fiscal plan, and talk a little bit more about the maximum allowed tax rate formula, how it's calculating some of the factors. And then the final meeting, just dealing really with the communication of the budget, looking at the brochure, talking about where we want to be in terms of the final budget levy number and proposed budget.
So I assume that all this stuff will be discussed with the full board as well, not just committee?
Right.
Start in the committee and then come to the board with the information, right?
Yeah, no, of course, no decision would ever be made in this committee, but rather it's, think of it as, as the policy committee really coming.
Policy committee.
Yeah, that's the best way to think about it.
Very explicit roles that we haven't had before.
Yep. I think it's a great evolution of the way in which we're going to work through some of these financial issues.
The spirit of it, I think, is for the board to have a bit more involvement in the strategic component of the decisions that are made, and that this subset of the board would then come to the full board with maybe a better understanding of position or stuff that we should be discussing as a board versus certain things just kind of going through a road process.
Well said, yeah.
Or just something being someone's idea and not necessarily something that we're really touching upon every single year. And as a board, feeling that you have more continuity in your budget development process.
Sounds great.
We've already been working on that first budget hearing. Susan and I are excited by the changes. I think you will be too.
Great. Unless anybody has any questions. And then what we're going to try to do is at every meeting, just have a review of another committee or two, right, until we kind of cycle through all the ones that we touched on at the, at the offsite.
Did the, did the meeting date distributed? Because I, and I'd gotten off that call late.
No, but we're still trying to set that up.
Okay.
Janine will be setting that up.
Okay. So with that, back to superintendent's report.
All right, and I should be able to... On some screens. Great. First, I want to remind everyone in the public that this is the time of year for the direct giving appeal from the Byron Hills Education Foundation. They will be reaching out to the community regarding the direct giving grants. I want to say that I am proud of their support of the district for the K-12 Wellness Initiative. So I did want to start that in my presentation, and to thank the Education Foundation for all of the work they're doing in our schools. Everything we heard from our principals tonight really stems from the support that they're giving. Next, I wanted to go through the long-range planning study. We had our demographers report that came in. And I would like to thank Sebastian Lashmet, who met me at Crittendon and was a little bit curious about what I was doing. And when I asked for some help, sat down and started asking me very intricate questions about enrollment. And one of the slides I actually attribute to him, so I'll show you about our work together.
He's a sixth grader.
He was a whip. Yeah, he was great.
His parents were the Bob Ross and the painting.
Oh, you're kidding? Small world. My whole world comes together.
Your favorite costume.
Yeah, so we have not, we have been watching our demographers report look very similar from year to year. We've been seeing this declining enrollment. And I have got to move that, sorry. It's the best I can do. And it is the best I can ask them to come back in an hour. And they're going to tell me this, and I'm going to have to sit close. Okay, so first, I was looking at the projected district enrollment. And I put some blue arrows and red arrows in here just to point something out to you. We have our 2018 actual column, which is the first column. And you'll see that the, what the total K2 change, percentage change is expected for 2019. That's our next budget year. 4.8% increase in K2. If you scroll down, a 3.9% decrease at the 3.5 building. Crittendon, you'll see an uptick at the 5.6%. So, so you're seeing some ups and downs as these smaller and larger groups are going through our system. And then if you take a look at the red line at the bottom, you'll see that for 2019, we're really looking at a 1.1% decrease based on the demographers report. We're looking at less than that for each of the succeeding years. Now, keep in mind that we really can't look too far out, because if you look much farther out than five years, those children haven't been born yet, right? So we're looking at a demographer's report. We don't necessarily know that. So this is the slide that Sebastian really loved. And what he said is, well, isn't it really interesting that the unshaded part is really a guesstimate at some point of who these kids are going to be? If you look at next year, that is actually based on births in Westchester and births in, in our area. But when you get to 2022 or 2023, those kids haven't been born yet. So this, these are all the projected numbers. The numbers that are shaded are the numbers of kids that are already in our system. So you might ask yourself, how has there been a decline in enrollment? Well, we thought a lot of it might have to do with economics, 2008 and beyond, and what was happening. And certainly, there was a decline in the countywide births. But births in Byron were also pretty interesting. If you take a look at 2009, there were 69 births in Byron Hills School District, I'm sorry, 2010, 63 births in Byron Hills School District compared to maybe 115 in 2003. But if you'll start to look at the last few years, 93, 87, 83, there's actually been an increase in the number of births in Byron Hills. So the other part of that is, okay, so if we start to see an increase in births, that could account for what I think the demographer does a pretty good job of in giving us a few years out. They're, they're not very far off the mark usually. But it doesn't bring into account home sales and proposed and approved home projects. So first, we're going to take a look at home sales. You'll notice a, a change also. 2009, there were 87 homes that were sold. Now, you can look at median prices if you want, but factor means that since then, we now have 177 homes that were sold in 2017. They may not be sold at the median price that you were finding in 2011 or 2007, but there is a significantly larger number of homes that were sold this past year. And then I say, all right, so why does that matter? When we were at our max capacity, it was based upon the number of homes that were in this district already. And if we are selling 177 homes in the district, the chances that children are coming to this district, I think, are pretty good. So even if we have the birth rates, we don't necessarily know that somebody moved into the district with a two-year-old and a four-year-old, right? That, we're not doing census data anymore. The other thing I think about as we're starting this budget cycle is what, we know that we've had this decline. We have adjusted with our staffing for this decline. We know that we're starting to see an uptick in the home sales. We know that we're starting to see an uptick in the births. And I'm thinking that we can anticipate, even though the demographer is claiming that we're still going to see some, some, you know, numbers in the minus, but they're not really substantial numbers for our K-12 district. But I also look at approved and proposed new housing. So I think that for the board's purposes and our financial planning, we also have to consider who may be coming to Byron Hills. So in addition to the number of homes that already brought our buildings to their breaking point, approved and proposed new housing could consist of Airport Campus, for example, which is on 120, where they are proposing 151 apartments and 22 townhomes. There are some adult homes, a lot of single home subdivisions. Eagle Ridge, which is being proposed right now also, 69 apartments and 94 townhomes.
Where's that?
That is at the IBM site. You have a lot of single ideas here also, but 16 homes actually on Old Mount Kiskel Road, that although some is senior housing. But in Mariani Residential, this keeps going in and out. Zoning isn't in place yet, and they keep having proposals. But the current proposal is 49 units, some of them one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and townhouses.
Is that the lumberyard?
That is Mariani. Yeah, the lumberyard is only, it's actually two slides away from here. These are a lot of smaller, but Wood Hollow on 128 is 21 homes in there. So, so you'll start to see quite a number of homes in here on Bedford Road. That is, that is where the lumberyard is, the Bedford Road, 36 units, some one-bedroom and some two-bedroom. It's a lot of proposed. It's not necessarily approved.
It's a lot of proposed.
Can we get this one in our packet, right?
This is in the enrollment.
When you see, when you see these proposed units, you also have to take into account that the developers who are going to develop them, be looking at their pro-formers, they're going to see, they're doing demographic studies just like you are, going to see what is the right time to bring this to market. And so it's not clear that this is a great time to bring all these projects to market. And, you know, we have your approvals. It's not a question in Byron Hills where you've got to, like in the city, where you, if you don't start your project by day X, you're going to lose tax benefits. And you start it, you know, when you get everything involved, you put your shovel in the ground. So this is interesting, but it doesn't necessarily tell us the market forces that may determine when these units become available.
Right. I mean, this could be something that's two, five, seven years out from now.
I mean, Brentwood? What is, so much to write a story about that place.
But this is the best, I think, presentation that I've seen in terms of just having it all in one place. Because I, I agree, like, we don't know what's going to happen, but at least we can now track it. And, and we know that here are the list of total proposed projects.
That's the one thing I hear from people who care to talk with me, is demographics enrollment. I hear Byron Hills is one of the only places the Roman's going down, you know. Nice to have facts.
Right. Well, if you look at Westchester County, Westchester County births were... Well, if you look at Westchester County, Westchester County births were significantly lower percentage to percentage than even Byram Hills. So I think we just saw a lot of people flocking to towns that had train lines.
That's right.
And, you know, that's where we saw booms of enrollment.
People staying in urban areas.
At Maranac, right. There are a lot of areas like that. So although this is the demographers projected enrollment for these years, I just think that anything past 2020, we have to be aware that some of this housing, should it come to fruition, could very much impact it. And some of the house sales with additional children in them can be impacted.
However, that said, demographic studies attempt to be pretty accurate.
Yeah, I thought that.
You know, this is, this isn't necessarily, this isn't witchcraft. You know, they're, I would imagine these numbers were.
They've been pretty accurate. We have not had this kind of, we have not had this kind of proposed construction in about 15 years.
Right.
So they've been pretty steady with a.
This is optimistic, really, I think.
It would be good.
Yes, I agree.
I'd like to have these kids in the district.
Yep.
But we have to find.
Right.
We've got some.
Bond issues.
Well, well, you never know. I mean, we do have bonds that are maturing next year, next year, and in 2023.
We have a long way to go.
Yeah. But it is something to consider at that time.
It's hard to believe some of those bonds are being paid off.
I have to say, though, that I'm grateful to the town supervisor, who has asked us what they think our threshold is for a number of students as they're starting to have these discussions. So they're, they're aware of us. And the last part is just going to be my regular student highlights. First, I invite anyone who would like to go to the upcoming winter concert series. We have three events at the high school and three events at Crittendon with our winter concert from the music department. So anybody that can go to those, they're pretty spectacular. I try to attend most, if not all, of those. Also want to point out, because it's before our next board meeting, January 10th, we have the Art Honor Society induction, which is taking place at the high school on the 10th, which is also amazing. And the next thing is, this was like a nice surprise for us today. We have two research students who are national neuroscience finalists. Just like, it doesn't stop.
Wow. That's two out of 12.
That's amazing.
Two out of 12 in the country.
That's even more amazing.
Rachel Chernoff and Samantha was here tonight at RZ. They were top 12 national finalists in the 2019 Research Prize.
Awesome.
And Rachel studied.
Both in the entire country. And two of them were.
Two of them are here. 12 in the country nationally.
A private school.
Right. So Rachel was investigating a type of cell that exists in the brain that helps with immunity and clearing cellular debris. That sounds fantastic. Samantha, who was here tonight, is studying the development of neurons to help neurodegenerative disorders. It's a little bright, brilliant.
Look forward to that.
Bright and brilliant.
Right.
And then the last thing I want to say is that we will continue our discussions and presentations after the new year on this starting school start time concept. So I will bring the second phase, which will include four different options of school start times and how that would impact our transportation services.
Right.
And then following that, sometime in March, I will have all of the extracurricular offerings that we offer in our district and outside organizations in our towns that our students go to extracurricular activities for. And we will talk about how any change in school start time would affect those organizations.
On that note, Wes put out a survey.
Yes.
Some of us, so I filled it out. So I encourage you all to fill it out, because they're also doing a study so they can resend data to us in the spring.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, they're sending it to all schools in the area, and then they're going to pull it together and try to research, you know, report out of it. So it just gives everybody more data to use.
That's great.
Yep. That's very good.
Yep. And that's it for me.
Anything else, Tim? Are you?
I think Tim stopped down.
You had a big night.
Some more policy today.
Kelly had a big night, too. But.
Just quickly, update on the theater project. It's almost complete. There's some punch list items that are still out there.
It's beautiful.
But we anticipated being done end of this week, maybe mid next week.
Is it being used now?
Yes, it's already been used.
Stunning.
December, December 11th is the grand opening.
Okay.
They're, they're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony.
That's a very nice.
December 11th? It's next week.
Yes, next week.
And then the turf and track project, the, it's been submitted to the state, the plans and the specs, so we're just kind of waiting on that. Should be a quick process, because it's kind of a rip and replace kind of project. It's not a full.
And you expedite it?
Yeah, we're, we're going to expedite.
Because, yeah, I've heard if you, if you can't expedite the project, then it can take over a year.
It can take 12 to 18 months, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's important, because that turf really needs to.
Yeah, it's obviously something we've got to do in the summer, so we're going to get the ruble and the specs done. And, and, so we'll definitely be.
Lucky we can expedite it.
And take a look around. We all, we now have signage on our fields.
Oh, the signs are great. Aren't they great?
Yep. I think that was part of that.
Right. So we needed to put signs down at the Crittendon Fields and Hunter Field at Wampus. Remember, I discovered that that was actually named by the board.
Yes.
It was on a rock. This is how I'm spending my time. Right. So we couldn't call it Wampus Field 1. We went back to what it was originally called.
That's right.
Just preserving history, which is great.
Can we go to the ribbon cutting ceremony?
Yes, so I just was looking at my calendar. So Byram's Got Talent is going to be the first, you know, even though we had the Shakespeare play in there before the breaks, that we've had sort of all of these soft openings. The theater wasn't actually finished at that time. But now it is officially finished, and Byram's Got Talent is going to take place on the 11th at 7:00 PM, and we'll have a little ribbon cutting ceremony before that.
I was there with you. Athletic Awards Night.
January 11th.
A lot of positive feedback.
Next week.
It seems like so much more space.
It must be.
It does. It seems bigger.
Yeah, less cumbersome.
What time is it?
Seven.
And is that just the high school?
At the high school.
I'd like to make.
So if we go for the ribbon cutting, you think it'd be what, at 6:45 or?
Probably 6:45. I could find out directly and let you know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yep.
Yeah, it'd be great.
That'd be great if you come. Appreciate that.
All right.
We'd like to. That's it for me.
Well, then we'll need to give it a quarter to put in for us.
Anything else, or?
Just quickly, the tax-based growth factor for next year isn't out yet. There was an error made by the assessor at Mount Pleasant. So these risks, set the numbers up to the state, they're recalculating our growth factor. We should have it very soon. And then finally, the budget development process with the finance advisory committee. We talked a little about that process for next year. The next presentation will have some projections for enrollment, salary, benefits, debt. And we'll talk a little bit more about the maximum allowable tax formula, how it's calculated and those factors. And we'll get a little more detail that way. So it should be, should be a fun budget process and a first start here, so looking forward to it.
Well, I for one, am super happy that you're here, Kelly. And I'm also happy that over the last few weeks, I've realized that you operate on a Byram Hills speed, which is great, which is working continually, but thoughtfully and carefully. So I've enjoyed our work so far. I'm glad you're here.
You're taking your first vacation in 2024. Let us know where you intend to go.
That's right. Right.
All right.
Great, that's it.
So then with board reports, just something very quick. Lower Hudson Education Council, which is really a composition of the School Board Association, Superintendent's Association, has all come together to finalize advocacy agendas for this year, because now we're getting into the season of starting to have discussions with all of our friends in Albany. And I think the main things to emphasize that impact us, one, TRS reserve, that's on the list, trying to get legislation to allow us to reserve for TRS. The second is school and student safety, to try to get more support from the state around some of these programs that, you know, we and others want to start to implement, both in terms of the physical safety and emotional safety.